Commissioner Bebel, Ward, and Kaiser are present. Is there anything we'd like to add to the agenda?
For me, thank you.
And let's the audience know, but some of the items that are more long term, we'll probably skip or shorten the discussion until we have a full commission. Anything that's time sensitive, we'll take care of. I'm it's from the public. We have signed up, is it online too? Please let me know if anybody online has to speak. I don't see any guests. In person, we have first Ms. Tammy Magra.
Morning.
Good morning. Nice to have you back at the meetings.
Absolutely. Good to be here. I want to address your proposal for reinitiating the tax of taxpayers. I'm a little upset about that. You know, last year when Next Energy took it upon themselves to quit paying their lease and reduce the price and the port sit here for several months without making a move. That was a breach of contract. And then when the port decided to do something, it was voted in to allow Nets to have a reduction in their lease payments. And now you want to tax taxpayers because you're in shortfall. That's offensive. That was a breach of contract. That's like you running up a bill at the P U D and decide not to pay it. And then the P U D saying, oh, well, you know, we're just not going to make them pay. We'll just let them pay a cheaper rate per kilowatt. That's not how it works. And now because of poor management, management and poor decisions, you're in a pickle. And the property there at Port Westward, if they breached their contract, they should have been gone. And they could have opened it up maybe for possible someone else. We know Nets lost their investors, the prime ones that they needed to stay afloat. Because if you listen to odd Friday radio shows, Mr. Eifer came on our show and talked about it. So for now, for you to increase the tax or bring the tax backs on the tax, on the taxpayers, it's kind of not a good look for you. And recently with the voting where everybody voted down all the levies, don't you think that the taxpayers are going to get a little bit upset with that decision? So I would think twice about what you're doing and maybe go back. For the court. And frankly, it was just stupid what you did and let them to get away with. And that's not good business practices. So I would urge you not to reinitiate the tax on the taxpayers to cover up for your boo-boos. And I would suggest that you make better decisions on your leases. And when someone doesn't pay, they're gone. That's just how good business works. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Howard Loominsaw.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
Making quite a few years. Paul Beanwell, Vice Chair of the Marine Advisory Board. The comments I can make really do not represent their viewpoints. I'm putting that disclaimer out there. I'm not really sure where I stand on re- putting your, your, your tax back on. Because we already in the Marina, which I strenuously objected to, raise the basic rate for somebody to park a car to walk the nature trail to go from three to $10. It's like almost a 300% increase. I don't really think that some of that is coming down fair when people now are paying the same rate as somebody that would come into the Marina with a tandem axle boat trailer, a diesel crew cab, duly pickup truck that will fit in our parking places. And a single car that's trying to walk a nature trail has to pay the same rate at somebody in a giant, giant pickup truck that takes three times the parking places and weighs so much more to, to damage things. I wish it would have been way in your pricing to have done things like if it was a tandem axle trailer, it's one price, single axle, another, and go by the one issue on the P U D. I, I also at last advisory board meeting, they started to float the idea a little bit. Like, how long is it sustained? They keep doing that, we're going there because of the dredging. And the cost of things that we have known is like dollars. And that, that the channel you were talking about, that big channel isn't that fresh. I really liked the thought that was entertained. I don't know how serious it was that eventually maybe Marina, we're so much property closer to the, on the channel. And maybe eventually to slow down, we have to spend on dredging. We could be doing a new, better facility. We won't have to come up the base so far. The channel's deeper on its lease, the closer you get to the channel. That how much longer is the Marina really viable? They're having huge amounts of people in bigger and bigger boats that need dredging. You know, even years ago, I was kind of people. So those are kind of my concerns at this time, you know, I, I, I three quarters retired. It's what really hurts when everybody keeps wanting to raise the prices. And a lot of our things like St. Helens and stuff, the federal teams on our water bill, and then they want to give more money by having lease levy and all that stuff. I don't believe in trying to get it from us twice. It needs to just be a fees, one place or the other, you know? And not even the amount of Marina payments, well, for just somebody who's still on it. I always looked at the possibility as being something that the port gave back to our community. But it's becoming so widespread, so many people from out of Washington, you become confused. It's becoming one of the less user friendly for our citizens. That's where I'm at.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Paul Langner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very much happy to meet you. I am Paul Langner, resident of the Port District, eight one seven King Bryan Mayor. Since our last budget meeting, I've got a whole bunch of phone calls asking me what the heck you're thinking about what you're doing. I think in hindsight, all of us, we kind of wondered when we, was it a really good decision that was made years ago to not not collect the taxes and forego tax collection? Maybe we should have underleveled or stuff like that. But hey, that's, that's, that's. One of the biggest problems you have as commissioners and the port staff is managing perceptions. I dressed up before. Of the six calls that I received, five of the people were not only just upset that the port was going to put taxes back on or consider retaxing it. But said the port should act self-sufficient and they should be, we should actually surrender taxing authority. And I'm here to just address that piece there. Under O R S seven seven seven, your operating guide, you have sections four hundred to four, seven seven seven, four thirty to seven seven seven, five ten. There are nine different specific sections of O R S seven seven to talk about the importance of the ability to tax. O R S seven seven seven, four thirty to four thirty-five, four forty, forty-four, forty-seven, forty-seven, seventy-five, twenty. It goes on. There's, there's nine of them. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a bond counsel. I'm not a C P A. But a decision that these, if some of these people want to go, that the court should never collect taxes is going to affect the credit rating of this port. It's going to affect the credit rating of the county because the county is the backstop to the port. It's going to affect your bonding authority. So if you had this wonderful project comes in that could do things that they wanted to use the port's authority to bond, you can't do it or it will impact that. And you start looking at the impacts, credit ratings, bonding authority, borrowing capacity, if the port will be limited, and certain long-term growth loan grant opportunities are going to be limited if you, if you forego the tax. The taxes collected are but a fraction of the operating budget here. And we all know that that it does, it's not, nobody's going to get laid off. There's not going to be any, any changes that way. It's going to impact some internal operations. I would encourage you to reinstate taxing. As I said the other day, I wouldn't be for underleveing if you don't need it all. But I think it sends a signal that we have to keep this going. I'm worried that if you go for five and six, 10 years down the road, people even understand you needed to put borrowing authority back in, the taxing authority back in to actually make a commitment for bonding authority or bonding capacity. I am of the opinion, and again, it is my humble opinion, there's one individual in this room or in this county. I would like to see the taxing authority, the money collected in taxes used for public access to the waterways. That's something that's fair to everybody in the taxing district. It's one of the things that people, when you do listen and do listen to people, they're always, always clamoring, how do I get to the water? How do I get the kids out to play at the beach or something like that? I think perhaps this court staff has capacity and the commissioner has capacity to sit there and dedicate it to, maybe it's fixing access back to the beach at, at last night, at the boat launch ramp. Bring the Sheriff's Department in. It's $375 for six inmates to spend four hours whacking weeds there and making that boat launch better. Projects at the Marina, absolutely. Just if it's fixing parking lots or something like that, let's, let's do it. But I think it's from this entire district that money can be used to benefit all of society, all of our people in our district, but also keeping the force fiscal responsibility intact for the ability to borrow and, and issue bonds. And again, so I, I would finish with saying, I urge this commission to limit the port taxes and dedicate the funds to raise public access to the waterways to help this.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Brady Preheim. And Kelly's on the line here?
Uh, nobody's.
Morning. All right. Uh, Brady, Brad. Uh, first, this is supposed to be a night meeting. And I object that you changed it because that was a schedule. And of course, Nick can't make the night meetings, uh, then he resigns. And same for Brian Fossett, frankly, because neither one of them are here. There's no one that sets up to, they didn't know when you meet and at what time did you meet? And you should show up. Just that simple. Also, obviously you keep shortening your comment time. I only need 10 seconds. Say you're an idiot. So go ahead and shorten whatever you want. I don't care. Um, but I do object. You don't really tie them. So I guess it's a mixed message or whatever. Obviously, you guys are struggling with money. One of the things I would suggest is that you look at cost-cutting things and maybe not print, uh, I think if you put it in front of back on two pieces of paper, it would be wasteful. But that would be a good thing to do. That should be something easy to take care of. Um, I also know that you, the tax would raise about a half a million dollars. I know where you can get a half a million dollars. You could have charged Nets their full lease. They've already lost half a million dollars this year. That would be 1.2 million. Your executive director and said shame on your son, recommended giving that tax away and then comes to you and tells you that, oh, now we need money. Gee, I wonder if you could have predicted that. Gee, that you cut, get Nets corporate welfare and get them. So now you want to tax little 85-year-old people that are living on reverse mortgages for their $12 a year on their house so that you can give Nets corporate welfare. You didn't index a favor. You've not been the port a favor. And frankly, what you've done is set a situation up that makes them look worse. Who's going to invest in a company that can't even pay their money? So you didn't help anybody except screwed yourself so out of money that you shouldn't be getting. Um, I also know that, um, the recent election was sent a very clear signal. No new taxes. Every single tax measure, some of which have been literally passed for 20 years, like when I went on fail. I think that's a clear indication that people are sick of this. And now you want to bring up the tax? And frankly, I sort of agree with Paul in some aspects of that. I wouldn't mind the tax if you were going to use it for public access and you were not getting corporate welfare. So your corporate welfare to Nets can stop. You can make a resolution right now and say, starting June 1st, we're no longer going to let you get away. You're going to start paying in June 1st. If you do that, fine, I'd be okay with bringing a tax back for you for public access. But I certainly don't support it, that you're going to give them corporate welfare and then want us to pay our $12 to, you know, a year to support them.
Thank you. Did anybody come on, wait, just a minute?
I don't see anyone on my Zoom screen.
We got everybody who signed up. Did we miss anybody? Mr. Ralph, come over, please.
I just wanted to express my opposition to your tax again, that you want to levy just because you can. Um, I would also encourage you to work harder on maybe filling the buildings, growing your growth. And a lot of these problems can solve very easily.
Thank you, sir.
Award for most dramatic presentation. Thank you all.
Best visual aids.
Full business. Interesting. Timing is everything, so. And just as Sean is preparing, I'll say that the commission will not be voting and had not planned to vote on the tax today, but if you at the June 12th meetings. June 12th?
June 12th.
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here this morning to recommend that the commission impose a full amount of port tax at eight cents per $1,000 assessed value. Those in the port tax is an investment in the future of the port. At our May 8, 2024 Budget Committee Public Meeting, after hearing a budget presentation and seeing the full financial picture of the port, all five citizen members of the Budget Committee recommended imposing a port tax of four cents for $1,000 of assessed value. So. There are three reasons. There are three main reasons why the commission should vote to impose the full amount of the tax. First, we can maintain the infrastructure we already have. This would include ongoing maintenance at the Marina, fire systems on all of our properties, Columbia City Dock, and of course, near Dock of Port Western. Second, diversify our revenue stream. Using the port tax to maintain our existing assets allows us to invest in revenue generating projects such as a new spec and building and building. It would also provide us with more financial flexibility. Finally, imposing the port tax would provide funds to allow people to better enjoy the waterways here in Columbia County. So. Significant funding is needed at Scappus Bay Marine Park to keep it operational. Currently, the Scappus Bay Marine Park operates at a loss every year. Dredging the Marina's estimated cost over $2.7 million currently. The commission is considering giving up the $500,000 in grant funds for the dredging project because we cannot afford to dredge. Additional funds from the port tax can be applied to help keep the Marina afloat and usable for public. The slide shows the tax rate of corresponding taxes generated by the port tax. The property tax assessed at $300,000, that is $12 per year, assessed at four cents for $1,000 value. Or $24 per year assessed at the maximum rate of eight cents for $1,000. Slide. In 2020, the commission voted to set the port tax at a rate of zero. And while the port tax is a small percentage of the port budget in one year, it adds up over time. The last four years alone, imposing the port tax would have yielded approximately 1.9 million. Over the next 10 years, imposing the port tax yield approximately $5 million. Slide.
Um, we've lost the, um, let's say, hold on a minute. It got a little exciting.
I think we're good there, right? Come with us into meeting.
Yeah, let's come back.
Of the 23 public ports in Oregon, every other port imposes a tax. The only exception is us. That's 22 of the 23 Oregon public ports. Opposing the tax is authorized by law under O R S Chapter 777. The other public ports impose taxes ranging from three cents to 61 cents for $1,000 value, depending on the port. It's worth noting that not imposing the tax puts our port at a competitive disadvantage in relation to every other Oregon public port. Slides. In 2023, the Oregon Legislature passed a new law which requires us to perform state mandated seismic upgrades to the Port Western Dock. The cost of this has been estimated at $29 million over the next 10 years. At the Railroad Avenue Facility, ongoing environmental cleanup costs are now estimated at over $20 million. Finally, as we've discussed, numerous public, numerous public meetings, dredging costs at the Marina have skyrocketed due to requirements imposed by Department of Environmental Quality for the E Q. Previously estimated at $2.5 million, dredging costs are now estimated to be 2.7 to 3.45 million. And if we cannot afford to dredge, we will lose the $500,000 grant which was previously awarded by Oregon State Marine Board. The impact of saying no to a grant which was already awarded results in the port losing credibility if we want to obtain future grant funding from OS and B. Slide. The cost of public waterway access is shown in Trussell Beach, our facility here in Columbia City. We, we charge no fees currently for Trussell Beach. Have to spend money for security every year. Using the port tax to pay for these costs improves public access to the waterways. This colorful chart shows the capital projects identified as necessary by port staff. The total's over 60 million dollars over the next four years. It also includes a $29 million estimate to sizingly upgrade the Port Western Dock. Slide. According to the financial analysis completed in 2024 Strategic Business Plan, we currently only have the ability to do $20 million in capital projects over the next 10 years. If you compare that to the $60 million identified by port staff, second bullet there over the next four years, you can see that we need some funding. Now, those all don't necessarily have to be done in four years. We just, these are projects we've identified and kind of keeping shut down, so. Opposing the port tax would follow with the lack of funding for things like the 29, $29 million in seismic work. Which we will be required to have a match at some point if we get a grant for, to do that one. As mentioned earlier, over a 10-year period, imposing the port tax at a maximum rate would yield approximately $5 million. Slide. The financial analysis in the strategic business plan recommended that the port tax should be imposed if the port were going to issue bonds or any additional debt. The port tax would be a specific revenue stream to use and order to back a debt such as general obligation bonds. The Budget Committee on May 8th discussed the possibility of doing a survey in order to find out people's opinions regarding imposing the port tax. While it seems that any survey would yield a no answer to imposing a tax because nobody wants to pay more taxes, it's also important to remember that we've been discussing our budget and the port tax in public meetings since 2023, including the proposed budget for 2023 slash 24. In our public meetings, staff made recommendations to impose the port tax on March 27th and April 10th of 2024. In fact, the port budget has been a continuing source of public discussion since the dock incident at Port Westward in November of 23. For example, in January of 24, we discussed budget issues in two public meetings related to canceling the construction of the maintenance shop. The port tax was also part of the strategic business plan process, public discussions starting back in August of 2023. That public process included feedback from the public about imposing the port tax. Opposing the port tax was identified as a strategic priority in the survey by some of the public participants. As the numbers show, port tax is necessary to maintain our existing assets, diversify our revenue stream, and improve access to the public waterways. This will, this will benefit the citizens of the Port District and all of Columbia County as we create a positive economic impact on maintaining livability and adapting to change. Let me take your questions. Again, just more information, I'll give this to Commissioners Fossett and Sorber. To have all the intel as well. Let me make your decision on June 12th.
Well, I know you mentioned that you, we've talked about this in our meetings here, but as we talked about in the previous meeting, in this room, having these discussions with just a handful of people from the public here doesn't really meet the criteria of outreach as far as I'm concerned. You know, so the work that needed to be done in order to inform the public and take their comments and explain to them why it is you're asking to reinstate the tax, that should have been done in a public way, reaching out to the public, not expecting the public to come here. So I think what, from what you've heard, uh, you know, today, we've got the majority of people here who are against the tax. It's a big uphill climb, and I don't think we've done the outreach necessary to lay the groundwork for this. And I'm really sorry that, you know, we've got the vote coming up at our next meeting. And the public is not aware of what, the majority of the public is not aware of what we're up to.
Our meetings are on YouTube. I would encourage you to share past ones with folks. Gina's been sharing our agendas and keep doing that. Yeah, but just speaking to your, your point, yeah, as far as going out, somebody gave the idea yesterday, Commissioner Fossett, in fact, and down in Marina, asking those people as they're coming and going to do a survey. I would also add that, and I wasn't a part of the decision to do away with the port tax. I worked here, but uh, I'm curious if we did a similar outreach as far as figuring out what people wanted. And I'm guessing the answer would have been, yeah, it's my own means, it's a task. But we've made a similar case, showing our infrastructure needs, which again, I'd like to hit on is aging. That's all it does is get older, except for the day install it.
I mean, even, even on something like the airport, um, we may get, you know, federal aviation funds for 90%. But say on a $300,000 runway project, that $35,000 we've got to put up. And so there are, there are lots of things that just won't get done unless we have a clear financial stability for the port. That's why in the last discussion, I'm, I am definitely in favor of this and will vote for it. I may be the only one doing it, uh, but vote for the tax as we go forward. We're too fragile right now to not want to keep that as a backstop, is my view. Any more questions for Sean? Thank you. Thank you to everyone who spoke today. And again, June 12th.
Well, again, to do business, Westside Pavement Maintenance. I've seen it. It's been connected. It's been fluctuating in and out throughout the meeting, so. Need better internet connection. I'm back now. I don't know. Yeah. I'm back now.
There are no guests on Zoom, though, as I said. Well, nobody's being deprived of.
I like it down. See, sick people? Really? That's just all.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the airport.
Oh, I read that wrong. I apologize. It is like saying I should have known that. Airport. Better glasses coming soon.
Uh, Resolution 24 dash 08, rule of the FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant, Westside Pavement Maintenance, scope of work, phase two. Um, in 2023, the port worked with airport engineer Century West to prepare an FAA Airport Improvement Grant or A I P Grant application. The application was awarded, awarded, and the port and Century, Century West began phase two final design engineering and upcoming construction of the Westside Pavement Maintenance Plan. The project will include a sound portion of taxiway B to runway thirty-three and both hangars is brands on the west side. Following the approval of the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, the port will open invitation to bid. As mentioned in the scope of attached scope of work, construction is expected to begin in summer of twenty twenty-four. Any question?
Any questions?
No, but good. Yay.
Yes, yes.
And this is, we are kind of up against some weather constraints here, we're trying to get this done, uh, this, this year yet.
You bet. Move to adopt a resolution.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Hubel to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four oh eight, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, which would be required today. Thank you, Lacy, sorry for the mix-up. Gina? Would you like to come do the two thousand two donations policy?
Yes, so at the last meeting, good morning, it came up about what our current donation policy is here in the port. So, and perhaps it was, um, suggested creating some sort of fund to fund donations to nonprofit groups, and I just wanted to share with you the current donation policy, actually, this was from two thousand, the first one's actually from two thousand nine, it was amended, which is currently a no donation policy, except for, um, exceptions that are direct benefit of port properties. And I just wanted to have more discussion on if there's something you'd like to pursue.
Pretty hard to do when we're missing two commissioners, yeah.
That's true, we can table this till next, if that's what you like.
I think that's a very good idea.
Thank you for the information. And Elliot, supporting Columbia River Anchorage.
Commissioners.
Good morning. Don't scare us.
I have before you today to ask that you support the port writing letter in favor of the U S Coast Guard's efforts to create federally designated anchorages at Crimms Island, Port Westward, and Spice Island. This effort is supported by maritime organizations such as the Columbia River Steamship Operators Association and the Maritime Fire and Safety Association. Maritime Fire and Safety Association is the organization that is, uh, leads and coordinates into the response of our passengers. In addition, river operators and service providers such as Shaver, Foss, various ship agencies, ports, Columbia River pilots, the Columbia River Bar pilots, as well as others, are supporting this effort. The Columbia River Channel was designed during the nineteen seventies and used a six hundred foot long, eighty-five foot wide, and forty foot deep vessel for design parameters. Over time, the channel's been deep into forty-three feet and vessels over a thousand feet now routinely call the river, yet the channel width and anchoragees remain the same. The increase in vessel size makes it necessary to create additional anchorages where vessels can wait for weather, tides, berths, and to anchor during an emergency. These anchorages provide a place of refuge with sufficient depth and keep the navigation channel clear. Vessels that go around or swing into the navigation channel face the risk of spills. It is important to note that all three of these anchorages have been used since twenty sixteen. The Port Westward Anchorage is used by vessels waiting for tides during the low water season or emergency. Importantly, the Port Westward Anchorage is also the farthest place down river where laden vessels can safely turn around before reaching a story. There have been no incidents related to vessels using the Port Westward Anchorage, nor have there been any complaints about vessels at that. In the future, the Port Westward Anchorage would provide an ideal place for ships and barges waiting to berth at Port Westward. As I mentioned, these anchorages have been in use since twenty sixteen. Without being federally designated anchorages, the advantage of the designation is that it would increase the U S Coast Guard's oversight of the anchorages, prioritize their use by commercial vessels. The federal designation would allow the installation of stern buoys. Currently, larger vessels must use standby tugs at these. That would no longer be necessary if there were stern buoys. In addition, saving monies, eliminating the need for standby tugs would provide environmental benefits. For these reasons, we ask that you support the port supporting public comment in favor of this project. Letters of support are due by Tuesday. Thank you, any questions?
Why do they need standby tugs?
Because they can swing with swine. So they stand by so they keep the ship big ones swinging, because their only point of contact with the ground is the forward anchor, they don't have stern anchors on those.
They would swing into the channel.
Right.
You've seen a lot on the Lewis and Clark Bridge, there'd be three of them downstream, and you could see them just drifting in when they were short handed.
Andy's Supremax was still swing, but they're within those design. Atomaxes or, you know, container ships don't generally go to anchorage, but if they did.
Right.
Stern buoy seem to work well in rainier.
It was wonderful, these agents, we always fought for them. Always wanted to get them.
I think this is a consensus issue, so if the three of us agree, please go ahead and proceed with your comments, and we'll let the others know.
Thank you.
You have a new business. Executive Director.
Commissioners, important of you is my report, and apologize for the lightness of it, uh, it was an aha moment this morning, I was like, oh, hey, that's right, that, that piece of, anyway, the electronic version will be more robust, I promise, uh, with some more calendar items for sure, um. We do have a vessel coming into Port Westward here, um, very soon, what, what's the ETA?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, train today, vessel tomorrow down at Port Westward, renewable diesel. We're still working at Scappus Airport with the Moore Road contractors, um, we're trying to get some, some infrastructure in the ground while the holes are open, including some conduit, uh, for lighting along Airport Road that will just stub up and, and will run the electrical later when we, uh, have the money and, and the need. Also, an eight-inch gas line will be ran down Airport Road and stubbed off at, uh, just past the gate, so we can, uh, in the future, use that for any development out there. As you may know, there's a lot of propane tanks out there currently that are, uh, the main source of fuel for the heaters and things, most of them, so. Um, got a meeting set up with Orpet to discuss the preliminary enforcement notice that they received, and I believe I sent that around to you all. Um, we'll be working closely with them, monitoring their progress, um. Similarly, here in Columbia City, the E Q had an unannounced inspection about two weeks ago. Um, and it was a stormwater person, not the air person, but he did make plenty of notes of things that he thought would definitely help the sawdust issue, so. We've met with Steve Nelson, uh, we talked about some, a few things as far as who can do what, the port versus them. Um, we should kind of work out some of those things, we have some deferred maintenance items that we're working through with them as well, so. More to follow on that. Railroad Avenue, we received the two point six million dollar settlement from the insurance company that is going to a dedicated account for that site, for the, for the cleanup, when we are to start that. So we won't touch that money except for counting the interest on it until time comes where we have to put shovels in the ground and start doing some things. Uh, and along those lines, we're just going to be setting up a meeting with D D Q, uh, with them to talk about ways forward there and, and how we see that working out, so. Stay tuned there.
I think that, yeah, the idea there was initially, we're going to say, we'll pick a date, but then you suggested we'll just, we'll just get a date and.
Let's offer our standard for evening meeting date, if it takes another time. Whenever, wherever, whenever.
After a second work session.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty important to issue reports.
Absolutely. Um, upcoming events, I will be driving up to Clarkston, Washington for the P and W Summer Conference in June. Uh, we have Citizens Day in the Park in St. Helens, June twenty-second. And the Columbia County Fair and Rodeo, July eighteenth, we'll have a booth there, uh, on July eighteenth, and Columbia City Celebration on August tenth, which is always fun. Again, this will be more robust, the electronic version, so stay tuned on that. Any questions, Sean?
Thank you.
Have we anything we need in? Commissioner, there will be no need for an executive session, correct? That is correct, so. Commissioner reports, and we'll be done. Mr. Hubel, uh, really don't, don't have much that I've done since, since the last meeting, I've been continuing to review the budget and make sure I understand it.
Yeah, the, um, agricultural committee meeting was canceled on Monday, uh, that means we won't meet again until July, however, there is work going on behind the scenes for to come.
Does any of it involve the, the, your island folks and?
No, their, their project is, uh, yeah.
That's too bad.
Yeah, it's.
I just wrote down that, uh, I guess quickly, my comments on the port tax are that, um, I was one who took pride in getting rid of it as a dividend for the activity of Port Westward, the money generated there. And kind of the nuisance of the trucks and trains and ships and things, I thought it was a nice benefit for the, for the county. I understand the, the discussion to, I talked with Commissioner Hubel yesterday, I understand the good uses we could do without, so I, I, uh, anytime we cannot levy taxes is a good thing. So I will struggle with this, I, I'm happy to hear from anybody who wants to get a hold of me, comment between now and the next meeting. I am interested in the public access, and I think the marina is, is an absolutely fantastic asset, but tax or no tax, we've got to get some questions answered before we make too many investments out there. Is, is the silt thing of the main channel going to stabilize and, and only prevent deep draft boats, or is it going to continue to silt in and pretty soon only kayaks do it through there? And that, that concerns me quite a bit, I hate to invest a whole bunch of money in things that can't be used soon, but we don't know what those are. Clearly, the dredging for the kayak area will have a positive impact on the marina, we're not actually dredging for the kayaks, even though it kind of looks that way. Lots more information to gather there. And the only other comment was our, our public speaking times have not changed in many, many, many years, so. Other than that, our next meeting, June twelfth. See you there. During the thinking. Under the discussion about that, and I haven't.